Test, test.
Hello, everybody. We'll get the show on the road. Just want to welcome everybody to the Barnstable Town Council meeting for March 2, 2023. I appreciate you all being here. And if we could do the roll call, please.
Counselors, Atsalus, Clark, Cullum.
Here.
Cuzak.
Here.
Rap Crissetti.
President.
Levek.
Here.
Ludkey.
Here.
Mendez.
Here.
Neary.
Here.
Schnapp.
Here.
Shaughnessy.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Steinhelber.
Here.
We have 11.
Thank you. And if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and please say standing for the moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just want to continue to remember the war in the Ukraine and for the, all the people involved in that there would be a peaceful resolution soon. Thank you. And now it is time for public comment. First, I would ask if anybody's here in the room, if they'd like to speak for public comment, before I go to those who would like to participate remotely. Councilor Deborah Dagewan.
Thank you, former counselor. Excuse me. I'm here, Deborah Dagewan, Village of Hyannis. And hi to all the counselors, everybody that's here. I'm here as a member of the Village of Hyannis, and I want to speak, this is my opportunity to speak about the Dockside project. It'll probably be my last term, and I'd like to express my concerns about the project. I come from, with some experience from being a butler of the developer, as well as being a person who had an opportunity as a council member to see the early project back in 2013. I've supported this developer many times. He's done some, some great things here in town, but when it comes to the Village of Hyannis, and I speak on behalf of the residents of the Village of Hyannis, the harbor is very special to us. Hyannis Harbor is extremely special, and I do have some concerns about us giving waivers for certain kinds of things that, when projects are being done at, at the harbor. We have to look at what we put in place already, and when I look at things like the walkway to the sea, we did the Legacy Trail, all of those sort of things are drawing, taking residents to, to the harbor, but it's also taking tourists to the harbor. And so we don't want to, you know, do a whole lot to change that view of the harbor, because to me, and I know to others, it's very, very important. And so I, I, I do, do have some concerns about that. As a butler, I've seen some great projects that have been done, and I've seen some that I feel were kind of left, not completed or not cared for over the years. And I have one that's close to my home, and over the past 10 years, it's, it's really not, not been looking very well. You know, I, because I'm in the area, I walked through it, and, you know, you could see that the bricks were falling down, the center part of, if you walk through it, it's been taken over by pigeons. This was a beautiful project, okay? And I felt that I needed to express my experience as a butler of, of the, of the project, but also as someone who saw the project early on. I don't know if, and I hope she does, Counselor Rap Crissetti and I, in 2013, were invited by Mr., by the developer to look at this project. I didn't think of that until the other day, that we had seen the project in its first They had an architect that'd come from Boston, and he brought us over, and I don't remember who else was there, but I remember the two of us being invited. And I remember her, with her astute self, said, you said something about, asked about clapboards or something, and we both looked at the height at the time and were not, you know, we both were concerned. It was, it was really, really a tall building. It looks nothing like what it, what we see now. It's.
Excuse me, can you wrap it up, please? I'm sorry. You're three and a half minutes.
Okay, I will, okay. But I, I just wanted to get those two, two points across that we did see this, and I feel that when we, you know, a developer comes through and puts forth that they're going to put in, you know, affordable units, then those affordable units, especially when it comes to our harbor, those affordable units should be where you, you said you're going to have them. I, I understand that we want to put them someplace else, they've given us some others, but those of us who are from the Village of Hyannis, who have lived here, I would love to see some of the folks that have lived here for years have an opportunity to bid for those, or be in a lottery where they could get an opportunity to, to sit at a harbor, get a harbor view that they may never, ever get on that. And because it is our harbor, it's so special, I, I feel that we need to be very, very careful about all of the kinds of waivers that we get. It's, it, once it's done, it's done. We're not going to get that kind of experience again, and we don't want to choke off the, the breeze that comes from the harbor. It has a certain smell to it. It has a light, it has a view that we see, and we've already always appreciated, I've been here over 40 years, I know people have been here for 100. And, but anyway, that's my view, and I wanted to share that with you tonight, and perhaps, you know, Counselor Rap Crissetti could share something from 2013 as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Paul Phelan. First, I want to thank Chairman Lavesk and Mr. Els, and give the rest of the council that's here tonight. This is a true honor to speak before you all, and a special shout out to my counsel, Mr. Neary. I rise to bring attention to the council's fact that those of us that care in this town are very spread, are spread very thin now. There's a lot going on. The groundwater issues seem to be on track for improvement. Let's hope that continues. Twinbrooks, I think, is a bomb that's going to go off in this town. It will certainly flood our schools. 350 units with two and three bedrooms, only 13% affordability of apartments, I think is ridiculous. I stand with my neighbors down there in residence. We need housing, and I'm going to address that in 30 seconds if you'll just stick with me, and I promise to keep it under 30 minutes. Next is the wind power project. We currently have, in my family, my house, a $1,700 credit with EverSource, because we have solar on the roof, $1,700 credit. Isn't that nice? Basically, free electricity, and I heat and get, and use hot water from electricity in our house. I'm skeptical that the wind turbines 40 miles offshore will reduce our costs or help us with our electrical needs. And that's going to be played out, I know, that's being addressed. The, the company, Evan Guard, is, is having financial difficulties. So central to me rising here tonight, folks, is the housing crisis. It's a fact that seniors like myself and young adults have no place that we can downsize and, or that's affordable to reside in. I'm glad to sell my house to a younger couple and let them move in. Would you believe it, folks, if I told you there are 750 acres in Barnstable, and I think they're underutilized and being misused? 750 acres, no one's shaking their head, saying this guy has a harebrained idea. Who's this guy? So, this is, this is my point to me, this is central to me rising tonight. The airport brings in no funds to the town's coffers, or very little. It's barren there for eight months of the year. It's mainly a gas station for airplanes, and I challenge anybody that's here in this room tonight to prove me wrong. Any, take a drive through there, the place is empty. A mere 5% of the town's residents, I would guess, use it. This is my own study with friends, family, and neighbors. One resident, I was up there for a meeting, and they're planning on spending $25 million, but it's FAA money, it's not our money, but it's still tax money, and he described it as an airport for the oligarchs, and I couldn't agree with that assumption better. We could solve our problems for the next 30, having a project just like they do at Margaritaville down in Florida. We could, we could have a multi-use facility up there where everybody could use. We could take 30, 40, or 20 years to do it in phases. We're lucky to have a person like Mr. Els to head that up. But I'm going to, I'm going to end with that, and I just think there's no golden goose in this town, folks. I think we should look at it, and I would love to see a, a blue, some committee look into this, whatever it takes. Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Anybody else?
Hi, my name's Wendy Crocker, and I live in Centerville, and I wonder if anybody could report on the property that the town bought, I think, close to three years ago? It's 310 Main Street. It's been vacant, it's rotting. I think it was Mark Els who said that if it was purchased by the town for the septic project, that it would be rented, and housing is such an issue. So it hasn't been rented, there's been issues with it, I live in that neighborhood, so I'm just wondering where things are at with that, because it's not bringing in any revenue for our town, and housing is such an issue, I just thought that could be means to an end, possibly. So if somebody could comment on that, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Crocker. Anybody else? Anybody remotely direct a point on?
We are waiting to confirm that there is someone, and I will, no, they've decided that they just want to watch. Thank you.
I'm sorry, did you say they just want to watch, or you're just waiting on confirmation?
No, they just want to watch. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, and now it is time for Counselor response to public comment. Counselor Ludkey, please.
Okay, I really appreciate all three of the speakers, I want to speak to all three of them, if I may. Mr. President, Deborah Dagewan, thank you for your comments. I too am very concerned about that project. I've been watching the planning board deliberations on it, and it struck me that last meeting, we heard from the commercial fishermen, and they talked about, you know, their inability to get into certain harbors, and this kind of reminds me of it, you know? We're going to lose the authenticity of our harbors and our villages if we just cater to the wealthy, and we all know those condos that are proposed are the wealthy, and she's correct, the affordable people will go out by Staples, I think it is. The, the size of it is, is enormous. As I say, I'm waiting to see, the planning board has, has due diligence to do what they're going to do, so we'll see, but I've been fairly busy in, in a way, but in the 1970s, I used to frequent Lewis Bay quite a bit by boat, and then I went this past year, and I was really struck by all the larger homes that weren't there before, so I think we're losing some of the character, and to lose that inner harbor, I think, would be, as she said, it's very special. So I really appreciate your comments, Deborah, on that. Paul, fantastic comments. I'm an airline pilot, the only time I ever used Hyannis, well, actually, I got my first pilot's license there in 1981. That's where I learned to fly, I used to have a flying school, used to cater more to local people, had a nice little flying service, and that's where Cape Bear just got their start. But, so in that, at that time, it was really a nice little airport. Right now, I don't know what it is. The only time I used it was when I was trying to get a free ride to work when I was based at JFK, but I don't fly out of there. If I fly, I take the bus to Logan, like everybody else. And I think there ought to be a commission. I think you're right, Paul, that $25 million, whether it's, it's free money or not, I mean, it, it isn't right, in my opinion, to lengthen those runways, and I'm a pilot, so I think there ought to be a commission to study the joint use of the airfield at Otis, that has two 10,000-foot runways with clear zones for miles. I've spoken to the airport manager out there, and he's all for it, so I would love to see that explored in a formal way, and I think you bring up really, really good points about what could happen, and if we didn't close the, the Gateway Airport, maybe it could go back to be a place to train pilots, there's a pilot shortage, they're well-paying jobs, something with the college, to bring it back to being a flight training with a smaller footprint would be really nice. And then find Wendy, it's interesting you brought that up, because when I was a citizen, not sitting here, but sitting where you are, I brought this up to the council, because I went and looked at that house, it's a gorgeous house, and it has a nice little backyard, and I said to the town, if you're not going to use it for the pumping station, why don't you build an ADU there as a demonstration project, and then get it back and rent it as affordable units, you know, with an ADU in the back and that, and, you know, keep it under the auspices maybe of the town as affordable units? And the response was, no, it's just going to go back, be sold back. So, I don't know, I think Wendy brings up a good point, and I think there's some creative solutions there. I'm not in the know, I'm, I'm not the person, I just appreciate your comment, Wendy. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ludkey. Counselor Schnapp, you had your end up?
Thank you, Mr. President, and, and thank you for all who came tonight. Deb, I appreciate your insight, I think you have given yet another viewpoint of what that Dockside project means to Hyannis and the people who live there, and the people who live in town, and people who enjoy our harbor, and I know when it gets to the town council, there'll be a lot of questions and deliberation on that, and I hope that there's a lot of the public that comes out and expresses their, their views, positive, negative, indifferent. Mr. Phelan, interesting ideas. I, I know every budget season, I think many counselors struggle with the dollar amounts that we continue to invest in the airport, but we get a lot of money, as you said, from the federal government, and that sort of, I think, propels our decision-making, so maybe there is a time for a pause at, at some point, but it does serve somewhat as an economic engine for our community and not just Barnstable, but for the region, but maybe there's other alternatives, as Counselor Ludkey has alluded to, so thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Schnapp. Counselor Rap Crissetti, please, since you were put on the spot early on, right?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank all that came out, especially to previous counselor, you'll always be Counselor Dagewan to me. I do remember, that's one of the, I don't have a very good memory, but I do remember that meeting in 2013, and like then, I have concerns on that project, and I will reserve my comment on that project when it, until it comes before the council, but rest assured that I will be taking into account the, the citizens of Hyannis, and their, what they vision there, and I don't think what they vision is what the developers visioning. And just for me, it's, it's unfortunate, it's, for me, it's a lost opportunity, because I would love to be able to attract people to the waterfront, tourists and locals, to be able to enjoy the waterfront and have a mixed-use development there, and that's not what's being proposed, which is unfortunate, but, and I'll defer to my fellow counselors with regard to the airport. I've always thought the airport was a lot of wasted space. I used to fly in and out of there all the time when it was pretty reasonable to fly on Air New England, you know, up to Boston, but it is not so convenient, and realized too that the airport is an enterprise account, so what they bring in is what they spend, and they, they work from their reserves and from that enterprise account, so that's a good thing. But it's bears looking at, for sure, because it's a lot of open space, and we do have a pretty large airport not too far away, so, you know, that, that's a possibility. And with, with regard to 310 Main Street, I've been asking that question for a while, and perhaps our manager will speak to it, but thank you for coming out.
Thank you, Counselor Rap Crissetti. Counselor Shaughnessy, please.
Thank you, President Levek. Counselor Dagewan, I too will continue to call you that. Thank you very much for commenting on the Hyannis Dockside project. I want the community to know that I do follow and read a lot of the comments about this, whether it's on the Nextdoor Neighbor app or different groups on Facebook, and, you know, I'm a Cape Cod Hospital baby, I struggle with it. I can't visualize a four-story building there. I'm, I'm sorry, I just can't. But also, having grown up with the Dockside all of my life, and being able to go and enjoy that deck, and even the Steamship Authority across the street, which is quote "new" in the scheme of things, still has community rooms and spaces that we are allowed to use, we're allowed to go into, we're allowed to access the building and enjoy their view, so, you know, I'll reserve comments also till it comes before us, but I do want, you know, people to know that it weighs on me, and, and I struggle when I think about it. Mr. Phelan, thank you so much for coming to comment. I just want to say that when, particularly when it comes to housing in this town, I'd encourage everyone in the community to bring your ideas, whether you think they're harebrained, creative, outside the box, because the truth is, that's where we're going to have to be. That's the way we have to start thinking about some of these issues, so thank you for Wendy, thanks for commenting. I too don't know the answer to 310 Main. The last I heard, we may potentially be using it, but hopefully Town Manager Els can comment on that for you. Thank you.
Madam Vice President, please.
Yeah, to Deborah Dagewan's comments, very apt. I, I think the most important thing that you said was that reputation matters, and that's what rings in my ears when, when I look at this project and I look at past projects by the same developer. And, you know, we'll have a lively discussion about that, I'm sure, when it, when it comes before us, but it's a, it is a mammoth project, I'll give it that.
And on this side, anybody? Counselor Neary, please. Starting at the end, sir, work my way back.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you all for coming in. Counselor Dagewan, always great to see you, and always appreciate your comments and thoughts, hope to see you much more in town. And Paul, thanks again, as always, I hope to see you on the ice soon, you know? We talk a lot, he's, he's in the neighborhood, so, you know, when it comes down to the airport project, I remember when it came before us with the landing, and the conversation was about second, you know, above shop housing there, and the FAA didn't, doesn't approve it or doesn't allow it, so, but I always thought that that would be a fantastic place to, to put housing as well, but sometimes the rules that we, you know, are bound to determine these decisions, and I guess 310 will come up soon, so, but again, thank you all for coming in and presenting. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Neary. All right, thank you, everybody, for participating in public comment. Appreciate you being here, taking the time, and your ideas, sir, and, and Counselor Dagewan, always good to see you. And, and, and Ms. Crocker, thank you for your concern about the, the neighborhood over there on, off of Main Street in Centerville. Appreciate you, I remember you from the other meeting when we acquired the property, so again, appreciate your time, so, you come from a long legacy of involvement in this town. Thank you. Town Manager Els, would you like to just talk about 310 Main Street, or do you want to wait till your town manager report? Now would be a good time, I guess, since you're up. I was going to wait till then, but.
Good evening, Mark Els, Town Manager. Certainly very familiar with 310 Main Street. More than happy to take it under review. We have been coordinating with the counselor from Centerville and the Village Association, so I don't want to surprise anybody with a response here. There have been mixed views of the use of the property, so let me take it under advisement with Counselor Atsalus and come back to you with an answer. Now, we are progressing well on citing the pump station in the roadway, the, what we refer to as Mother's Park Road. We do not want to release that parcel, because it is an alternative parcel to cite a pump station on. I was the director of Public Works when we proposed a pump station at Mother, Mother's Park last time, probably 2009-ish, and that went very badly. So we want to make sure that if that.
So can we make it happen? Can we make it work?
Okay.
I'm not going to say that.
Okay. Do we need to start from a certain point, so just reintroduce them altogether?
We're going to like pretend, we're going to look at deja vu moment.
We're running back.
We're going to, oh, hey, like you never came up before, you know? Oh, here we are.
Great to see you.
Yeah.
Come on, Captain.
We're professionals, we're professionals.
Rebooting, rebooting.
All right, welcome back, everyone, to the Barnstable Town Council meeting here on March 2nd, 2023. We had some technical difficulties and just to have a little bit of a deja vu moment, I just want to reintroduce the Chair of Chair, Madam Chair, Woman of the Barnstable Youth Commission, I want to make sure I cover all those bases, and Isabel Rudy to the, to the podium, please, and if you could introduce the, the members of the Barnstable Youth Commission that are here with you.
Sure, so again, my name's Isabel, you can feel free to call me Izzy, I prefer that, but I'm a senior at Sturgis East, I've been on the commission for about three years now. I was the vice chair last year and the chair this year, and thank you all for having us, we appreciate it. We usually come at the end of the year and, like I said, we're, we're happy to come again at the end to give you an update. I think we're just going to have people introduce themselves as they come up with it, for, because we each have a slide assignment, so we'll just do it that way. But if we just take a look at our screen here, I'll kind of take you through what we have going on and what we've done. Most of our events tend to happen in the spring, so if you don't see specific updates about what's happened, that's, that's why. You might have to click it for me. Oh, there we go. All right, so if you're not familiar with the Youth Commission, for anyone watching or those on the council, we aim to be the voice of the youth in the community and act as a liaison between the town and the youth. And our motto, you know, is like, we are the voice of the youth, so, you know, that's what we aim to do. We aim to plan events that, for parents, that have to do with the youth, as well as events for actual kids in the community, so we're doing both of those things. Here's a list of the, the people that are on the Youth Commission. We have three graduating seniors this year, so we are going to be looking for three new members and we're always looking for people that want to be involved. So if you know any kids that you think would be a good fit, definitely reach out to us. And thank you to our adult advisors, we have State Representative Kip Diggs, our Town Councillor Leah Town, Councilor Colum, George Noonan, thank you for all that you do, we know we're a handful, and Sergeant DeRusso, so thank you to all those people, we could not do it without them, you know, we're busy high school kids, we're trying to manage that and do the Youth Commission, it's a lot, so we definitely owe a lot to our adult advisors. Yeah, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Luke Andre Sater and I'm the Vice Chairman of the Youth Commission and it's good to see you all here. So this is my slide, so the Youth Commission meets two weeks out of every month on the 2nd and 4th Tuesday and we meet at 6:30 PM.
We also have a lot of subcommittees going on, so we're not just meeting at those times, we're also meeting probably multiple times a week, depending on what's going on. He made this really tall, but I'm not going to touch it, but anyway, we have a lot of subcommittees going on and we'll kind of walk you through what each one of those subcommittees is doing, but, so we're not just meeting on those two days a month, so it is a big time commitment, if you want to tell those kids that you think that might be interested. But here are just some lovely pictures from last year of us at the State House and at one of our events.
All right, cool. And this is my next slide, so one of our initiatives that we have this year is the Climate Change Subcommittee. So actually, this year, we are planning an event with the Silent Spring Institute and the MAP Fasten Your Health Study. It's going to be taking place on March 25th at the 529 Building on Main Street from 1 to 3 PM. And there's a picture of the flyer, but I also brought copies of the flyers for each and every one of you, so when the next person's presenting, I'll hand them out. And Betty Ludke is actually one of the people who is on the, the panel that we have, so it's going to be a series of short films with Q and A, so public, the public can come in and they can ask their questions regarding the study and what's going on and how PFAS is affecting their lives. And I would like to invite all of you guys to either attend our, attend our event or provide your support in any way that you can.
We're working in conjunction with the Barnstable Green Club and the Sturgis East Environmental Club, so again, it's a great way to connect the kids in the town. It's not just people who live in the town of Barnstable, which we learned by people wanting to be on the commission, but even if you just go to school in the town, you can also be on the Youth Commission, so that's pretty cool. But yeah, that's March 25th from 1 to 3 PM, if you're interested.
Hi, I just need to not get too close. Hi, I'm Jaden Jeffries, I am a sophomore at Barnstable High School and I've only been on the Youth Mission for two years, but they're already like family. And I want to give a thank you to Luke for driving me around as he does. I can't do that yet. So what we have here is the Substance Abuse Forum, which happened late last year, I believe. And what it was, it was a community event mainly focusing on substances that the youth may or not be using too much, maybe having negative effects on their health. So it was predominantly for parents and just older people to understand the youth. And what we had was what we called the Hidden in Plain Sight Trailer, which we allowed the parents and adults to walk around inside and take a look around. What they might not have seen were the hidden compartments, whether it be behind a poster or hidden under a bed sheet, wherever it was, that is a place that a member of the youth could have been, could have been hiding a substance that could have had negative effects on their health. And while this was going on, we also had inside a presentation, which was more of a show and tell manner, showing what might have been causing the problems that the youth might be having. We also had Health Services Executive Deborah Seivola, and she ran the conversations on what, what the youth may be using, how to stop it, how to talk to your children, and stuff like that. She was great and she really ran the, ran the whole conversation right until the end. If we had one parent that we could have helped out, one worried parent, that event was a success to us.
Definitely. Definitely, it was definitely a success this year and thank you to the officers that helped, that's definitely always the most poignant, is the officers like showing all the new, you know, little items that kids are using. Parents are always shocked what they look like, because it looks like a highlighter, you know, things that kids are using, so parents are always shocked and we think it's a great way to connect like the parents to the kids, like what the kids aren't telling the parents. And Officer Stampell actually works in the high school, so, you know, he sees it firsthand.
Hi, I'm Cameron Leveque, so I'm a sophomore at Barnstable High School and this is my second year as well on the Barnstable Youth Commission. So this is the, about the job fair and this is happening March 8th, I believe, next Wednesday. It is, it's for 14 eight-year-olds to find businesses that employers will like use them more and they need younger children to help, help out. And there's 35 businesses this year so far, roughly about that. And we, it's, it's from all over, all over Cape Cod and some off Cape businesses. Also, we have two buses coming from the Barnstable High School going to HYCC. These buses hopefully will be full of students eager to get jobs. This is advertised to all the schools all around Cape Cod and all websites and social, social medias. There's also a job coaching room, which will help new employees to learn tips, coaching tips, about how to further their chances to be employed by these businesses. Thank you.
It's definitely a mutually beneficial event for the kids and the businesses. There's a lot of businesses that are looking for employees, that's been a big issue in the recent years and, you know, there's a ton of kids that are looking for jobs, so we have the Job Coaching Room, like Cam said, to get kids prepared, what you should wear to an interview, what to say, what not to say, we're really going to hype up that room this year. And yeah, I think we have 39 businesses now since I, since I made this, so it's free for everyone, you don't have to sign up, you can just come and walk around, just talk to people, see what you like. We have a range of businesses everywhere from like Katie's Ice Cream on Main Street to the Fire Department, you know, just all different kinds of jobs. We actually have a lot of like nautical type jobs this year, so that's interesting. And yeah, 14 to 18, a lot of them are 16 and up, so if anyone is a job seeker that's 16 up, we do have a lot for that specifically as well.
So this year, we'll also be doing the Sixth Annual Seventh Grade Youth Summit that we do every year, so this is an event that is extremely important to us because it's about educating seventh graders about the challenges that they may face in high school and what they can do to overcome those challenges and also how to more successfully navigate their way through these challenges. So this year, we're going to have a couple of different speakers, so we're going to have the typical speakers, we actually have, these are the same speakers we had last year, Rob Hackinson from Dynamic Influence and Kevin Rosario from Gosnold of Cape Cod. Typically, what we do is we have the students in groups, so at different times, groups will be meeting with the peer leaders at Barnstable High School, where they'll be talking about making right choices in high school and different things that they might, that might come up in high school that could be a challenge for them. We will also have the, we will also have a club vendor fair that we did last year that was pretty successful, where student clubs at BHS will come and they will present things that they do and will, can sign people up, like right then and there if they're interested. It's like a nice way for kids who maybe have an interest to... It's like a nice way for kids who maybe have an interest to have a group of friends right off the bat going into high school. And so, that's going to be on May 19th. And in addition, we're also going to have a bunch of different nonprofit organizations and community organizations that will be at the vendor fair as well that can talk to the kids, so.
Yeah, the new superintendent is super supportive of our initiative with this, and, you know, they approve of the speakers and everything like that. And also, the new Vice Principal, I believe, is also, we've talked to him about it, so we're all set to go. It's going to be at the BACC again. It's a lot of logistical planning, but, you know, it's good for kids to, it's very unique in Barnstable that you're going straight from seventh grade, yeah, right into a high school setting, and it's very different. I'm sure these kids can speak from experience. So, we really enjoy this event and get good feedback from the teachers and the students every year. So, One Love is kind of my little, my favorite thing that we do on the Commission, so I'll talk about this for a little bit, but One Love, if you don't know what it is, it's a national nonprofit organization that teaches kids about healthy relationships and how to avoid unhealthy relationships that can eventually lead to abuse. It's not just about romantic relationships, it's about all different kinds of relationships, whether it's friendship, familial, you name it, workplace, whatever, again, you name it. So, we talk about it all. It's just how to avoid abuse and recognize the signs of an unhealthy relationship. So, we do this in forms of video-based workshops. So, here's what we're planning to do so far. Barnstable High School sophomores are already booked, ready to go April 5th. We've done that for the past few years. We have St. John Paul, which is TBD, we don't know the dates yet, and Sturgis is going to be doing sophomore students. We also might be doing Cape Cod Academy, and we're going to be helping out with Falmouth Academy this year. So, you know, we're really spreading our reach. We have kids at St. John Paul that have also formed a club and are, you know, planning all these ones at other schools, but there's only so many people that are facilitators, so we're going to help out as, at many as we can.
This year, we also created an Instagram and a Facebook page. It's pretty self-explanatory. It's right there. It's just to kind of, you know, get our foothold online, especially on Instagram with kids who are our age, to get people interested in issues that are pertaining to the youth, both for the adults that they can see what the kids are doing and for the kids to see what they could be doing.
So, that's pretty much it. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, but thank you again for your continued support, and, you know, happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you. It was a great presentation. Really appreciate being with us. Thank you. So, now that being said, I'm going to look to my left this time and see if there's any comments or questions for any councilors. Anything to my right? Madam Chair, Vice President Jen Colum.
You got it all.
I didn't hear a woman in there, did you? I'm just, it's his first night.
Missed one, yeah.
It's his first night, he's going to figure it out. Anyways, I'm, I don't know if there's anyone from Pope John Paul on the Youth Commission at this point, is there? There is, good.
Yeah, we have two girls from the Youth Commission, sorry, from St. John Paul on the Youth Commission, yes.
That's awesome, yeah. I mean, I just can't get enough of you guys. I'm so proud of you for doing what you do and speaking for kids that don't have the voice or can't speak. I especially love the One Love thing. That's amazing, because it is, people are so manipulative, and you really need that skillset, whether it's in your own family or at a workplace, like you were saying. And especially, I think, girls need that. So, it's great, and we haven't always had this great relationship with the superintendent, and you may not remember that. But it's, so I'm really excited to see what we can accomplish with Superintendent O'Hearn, because I think she really, really cares about your mission and understands that it's different than student council, and that you're really bringing forward the questions that parents have really about, and kids, peer-definitely, but also parents really need to hear and understand what the struggles are, because they're way different in the high school than they are in middle school, way different, as a parent of someone who's a freshman, I can say that. So, I'm just forever thankful, and I know it's a, you know, Herculean task with all the other things you guys have going on, and all the sports and everything else, but what you're giving your community and your peers is so valuable. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilor Shonsey, please.
I'm always excited to see you guys. I'm always excited to interview you in Appointments Committee. I think for me, when I look at you guys, what's exciting is I'm looking at, you know, the next generation of my hometown, and hopefully, the next generation of town councilors, town managers, town engineers, so that's why I get excited when I see you guys. I wanted to comment on, I think, what a huge success the Job Fair is, and not even so much for the youth, for the employers of the town of Barnstable. I know I spoke to several in the last couple of years who were not only surprised at how easily, after not being able to find help, were able to, you know, make those hires right at the Job Fair, and I know, like, for one, a little trepidation about hiring 14, 15-year-olds, and at the end of the summer, I asked them how it went, and couldn't wait to have them back, and offering bonuses if they stayed for like all four years of high school and worked for him. So, I talked to three different employers who not only were thrilled at how easily they were able to come to the Job Fair and fill those summer slots, so I just think that has been a real win-win for the community, and thanks to you guys for serving.
Thank you, and we're still looking for more. You can still sign up up until the day, so any businesses that you know that might want to, you know, get employers that they're going to have for all four years of high school, we're still looking, so.
Madam Chair, may I say something?
Sure, go right ahead, right ahead.
I helped out a little bit with the advertising for the Job Fair, and a lot of what it spread from was word of mouth, and that, to me, is just an honor, having people talk about an event that we kind of started. It's great knowing that people know about it, people enjoy it, and they're spreading it themselves. Back to you, Izzy, I've always wanted to say that.
No worries.
I would like to say something as well. I just want to say a special thank you to Amy Harwood, who helps us in planning the Job Fair every year. She really takes on like a lot of the heavy lifting, and for, I know it's like a Youth Commission thing that we do, but without her, you know, the Job Fair really wouldn't be as successful, so just wanted to say thanks to her.
That's great. That was really nice of you, Luke Andre.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm always amazed at what you are able to do every year, and you've added another event, so, and all in a very short period of time. But I think the other thing that impresses me so much about the Youth Commission is your ability to sort of pass on your leadership from year to year. I mean, we've seen presentations for many years, and your colleagues, you know, you've grown into these roles, and you seem to bring in your freshmen and sophomores in a way that, I don't know, what's your secret? Do you pass it on? Is there secret handshakes, or?
I think it's just, it's a tight-knit group, that's, we have good camaraderie, and I think we all learn from each other. It's, you know, we're all in the same subcommittees, we're all doing the same things. I'm not that good at delegation, I'm kind of, you know, I'm trying to get better at that, but I think that's the key, is you have to give people jobs so they learn how to do it.
Yeah, definitely. I think definitely just like talking to people at the same level that you would talk to an adult, I think really, for me, has been something that's been special, working on the Youth Commission. When I started on the Youth Commission, I was extremely quiet. I was a very shy kid, but being on the Youth Commission and being with other kids who were extremely mature and cared about issues in their community really helped me like grow as a person. So, I think as the Vice Chair this year and being a senior on the Youth Commission, that has really been special for me to talk with younger kids who are interested in this type of work as well.
You were much shorter then, too.
I was just a little bit shorter.
Councilor Ludkey, please.
Yeah, I just really want to echo what's been said, it's just your professionalism is just amazing for people of your age. I'm really impressed by it, the way you speak, it's just beautiful. And I was wondering, you said you had three openings. Do you try to distribute between the schools, I mean, public and private? Can you explain? When those three people go out, will you try to recruit from those same schools, or how do you handle that, to keep the distribution across all of the schools, public and private?
Yeah, so it's definitely been a challenge. We, again, like we said, we would like to invite, if you guys know anyone who would like to be on the Youth Commission, to fill those roles, that would be amazing. So, we kind of just, for recruitment, what I've done for Barnstable is I kind of go to like the hubs, and I ask them to recommend people who would be a good fit for the Youth Commission, and then I meet with those kids, and then that's how we got two new members this year. It's difficult, because some of these schools are a little bit smaller, so it's kind of hard to balance. There's a lot of Barnstable and a lot less of private and other public schools, so it kind of varies depending on the year.
I would say that right now, we have a pretty good spread, but after I leave, we're going to have no one from Sturgis, so like specifically right now, I'm trying to reach out to the people at Sturgis to see who might be interested. But yeah, like Luke said, it's been a challenge, and it's specifically a challenge, because a lot of our events take place at Barnstable High School, and it's really helpful to know how Barnstable High School works. Like me at Sturgis, I don't even, I don't know what a hub is, you know, like we don't have enough kids for a hub, so I don't know how that works. So, it's helpful to have all these kids that go to Barnstable, but we have a pretty good split right now. If I get, you know, another kid from Sturgis, then we have Sturgis, St. John Paul, Cape Cod Academy, and Barnstable High School. We would love to see like a Cape Cod Tech. We had a Cape Cod Tech kid one year, and that was great, but really, we welcome people from any school, and we are trying to distribute it so that we have, you know, people everywhere that can help distribute the message.
Yeah, as long as you go to a school in Barnstable or-
Right into the mic, right into the mic.
Sorry. As long as you go to a school in Barnstable or you live in the town of Barnstable, you are eligible to be on the Youth Commission. So, those are really the requirements for joining.
Thank you for that clarification.
That's what I was going to ask to clarify, just so we knew.
Any other comment, question? Thanks for being here, really appreciate you being here, and the last time the Youth Commission presented in person, I actually was just in my first year as a town councillor, and my oldest son, Connor, was a sophomore, and my third oldest son, my 10-year-old at the time, was sitting in the audience, watching, and after the presentation, actually, I saw him the next morning, and I'm talking in third person, because he's standing in front of me, but the, I said, "What did you think of the meeting last night with Dad on the dais and your brother presenting?" And he said, "I thought it was kind of weird." I said, "Why did you think it was kind of weird?" He says, "'Cause all the councilors said same things sometimes, you know, and they, where they were talking," and I said, "That's because they're big fans of yours," so, or the people who were speaking. So, the same thing tonight, Cameron. The reason why we're all saying something is we think you're all great, and we appreciate you, and the great thing about you doing a Job Fair is I know for a fact that all four of you actually have a job, so I think that's important. When you actually are recruiting for people to work, I think it's important for the youth to have jobs and work, and have that balance between fun, school, and recreation, but also a job, to kind of teach you responsibility and be able to listen to authority, and you definitely all have that and that balance. And really, I could, I know all four of you individually, I've had a chance to spend time with each one of you, and from either coaching or presentations or different times together, and you're all real special kids, and I mean that, and I don't use this word lightly, but you really are amazing, and I appreciate you being here, and it's important to recognize that, so thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next part of our meeting is our Town Manager Report, and we are recording our Town Manager Report now, so I have this nifty little, oh, and just so everyone knows, on the agenda, I did get a phone call from the Assistant to the Executive Director of the Cape Cod Commission, Kristy Senatori, that they would like to postpone to another meeting, so Kristy wasn't able to make it after all tonight, so that will be moved to another meeting. If anybody's watching and was waiting for that report for any certain reason, so I just wanted to announce that. So, moving on, the Town Manager Report has been pre-recorded and is available to Town Council and the public. The report will be prepared in written form and posted on the Town Manager website, as in the past. The Town Manager and staff will be available to answer any questions regarding the report as presented. The Town Manager's communication for the period of February 17th to March 2nd, 2023, included in an update on, one, remote meeting announcement, two, the Hyannis Golf Course clubhouse damage on February 5th, 2023, the Channel 18 cable service interruptions, the budget action calendar, meeting with the Lieutenant Governor and the state agencies regarding proposed changes to Title V, draft Town Manager grant of location regulations for small wildest facilities, update on disposition of three municipal parcels and safety training opportunities, small business grant opportunity in Hyannis, and the local comprehensive plan update by Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. And that being said, I would ask at this point, does any of the Town Council have any questions for Town Manager Ls or any other director in the room? Yeah, I'm just going to look to my right. Councilor Shonnet, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two questions tonight, and the first one has to do with the property disposition that I think is an under number eight, and I'm glad to see that we're moving on these three properties, but just wanted a little bit of details on the RFP process that will be underway very soon.
And we have Town Manager Ls with us, and also Director of Asset Management, David Anthony, thank you.
Thank you all, and I'll ask David Anthony to come up and respond to that question.
Good evening, councilors. David Anthony, Director of Asset Management. The RFP process is a public process that we now do online, one of the benefits of COVID, if you can call it that. We will be establishing the parameters in which we put a piece of property out. People will get an opportunity to bid. There will be a minimum bid that is established. We will take all of the bids that we receive, and then, provided that they are responsive and responsible, which basically means that they can demonstrate that they're a viable partner, and they also have followed all of the directions in the process, then we would sit down with the highest bidder, in this case, and hopefully negotiate a purchase and sale agreement, and at the end of the day, transfer the property, register it, and it goes back onto the tax rolls unless it happens to be with an entity that is exempt from taxes.
Will there be any marketing other than posting it on our website, in terms of how will people know that this RFP has been made available?
It's an excellent question. For the properties that we are, we are looking at currently, we always reach out directly to the abutters, and we include those properties that are across the street. We have had people who were interested in buying some of the properties in 2018, simply because they wanted to make sure that the trees didn't get cut down. They wanted to have control of that. By going to the abutters, they are, they're sent letters inviting them specifically to go. Because these will be individual RFPs and not necessarily all issued on the same kind of cycle, it'll be a little bit different than 2018, when we held a meeting in this room with anyone who was interested, and we were, and we were selling 23 parcels at the time, and we had quite a bit of attendance for that. I think that that was a good use of time at that point, but these are going to be more or less of interest to the abutters, but we will, we can certainly work through some non-traditional ways to try to get that word out. The local newspapers do pick up on anything like this, and we would certainly make ourselves available, and hopefully, coverage will help us in that way. Neither of these parcels is going to be particularly big enough, one of them specifically is only .13 acres, so the likelihood of there being a lot of interest from the outside, other than the abutters, is slight, but one never knows.
And on the affordable parcel in Morrison's Mills, has that been determined on what can actually occur on that site, or what, is there still some conversation going on about what will actually go on that, how that RFP will be written?
We've been working very closely with Planning and Development on this, obviously. We are in the second round of draft discussions. We wrote up an initial one, actually using some other disposition RFPs for other affordable housing types. There's a couple of different land ownership models, and what we had to do was determine which one we thought would be more appropriate for that particular property. Instead of rentals or mixed use, we thought that homeownership might be a better way to go. When we put this RFP out, there is always the opportunity for people who want to see changes in that RFP to come back to the town and say- to see changes in that RFP to come back to the town and say, well, would you allow us to do this? Would you allow us to do that? We can issue an addendum that then broadens or narrows the way that that RFP is structured. So I think we have a bunch of opportunities to help craft it as it goes. But we always have to make sure that it's open and fair in competition. We can't craft it for any one particular entity. Although, the model that we do is always going to lend itself to a particular type of developer. So we're coming to kind of a final draft, working with Planning and Development on that. And hopefully, that will be out as well within this very month.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, you had another question.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
This is more for our Town Manager, again. Under the, geez, this is a long, locations regulations providing standards for the placement of wireless communication facilities and the public rights of way. That's under your jurisdiction to create those regulations. Could you speak to a little bit of the enforcement once these regulations are created? Is that something that would normally go through the building department or site plan review?
I believe it's a Town Manager regulation that would be enforced through our, through our building commissioner, I believe. Am I correct on that, Karen?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, we don't have a regulation like this currently in place. So I believe so. Let me sit with legal building commissioner and clarify that as to how we'll respond. Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah. I assumed it was the building commissioner, but okay, shouldn't assume.
Any other questions from this side, comments from Town Manager? Councillor Shaughnessy, please.
I just wanted to give a huge thanks to our police and fire departments here in Hyannis for the trainings that they've been doing. And it looks like from this report, a lot of people have attended of a lot of ages. So I thank you so much for providing that to the community. I think it's a great thing. And I think it's giving people a lot more emergency knowledge that they might need someday. So I want to thank you for doing that for the community.
Thank you, Councillor Shaughnessy. Any other questions? Comments? Councillor Star, please.
So, Mr. Ls, I was just wondering, your report was written before your meeting today with DEP?
The meeting is tomorrow with DEP.
It's today.
Today's the second. Sir.
Have a good meeting. I couldn't read it. I was trying to read the screen here. What day is it? Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments on questions? I will say thank you to the golf and leisure department for their work in pivoting and getting old Barnstable. That's not an easy task, up and running again. And while we address the flooding over at the Hyannis Golf Course. So thank you for that. Thank you, Director Anthony as well, and your staff. That's, it's definitely a group effort. Wasn't something that was planned on, obviously. And so, and everybody, really, I mean, Assistant Town Manager Andy Kleiber, Finance Director Mark Millen, it really is, it affects everybody, DPW, everyone. So I appreciate all your efforts in regards to that. Is there any other question before I ask one more? If I could just ask Director of DPW, Dan Santos, if he could come forward. I had a question for him today in regards to a question I had. I had gotten about a change in, in how we're going to move forward with our hookups for our residents. And I just asked Director Santos if he could further explain, please. Much better than I can.
Sure, thank you. Good evening, councillors. Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. So there's been some misinformation in the community that I think it's important for us to correct. And that misinformation is that the DPW made a mistake in how we put the sewers into the Strawberry Hill Road project, and that that would end up costing homeowners more money because of this mistake. Nothing could be further from the truth. There's no mistake has been made. There's a very complex engineering that goes into designing a sewer system. And there's main lines, and there's lines that'll go into the community. And what that drives is where the sewer goes beneath the ground surface. In this project, it's very deep, 20 feet in some places. In other communities, it might be four or five feet. But in this particular one, it's very deep. And so it was brought to our attention by, I think, a contractor originally, that this was, these were deep and that it would, it might cost the homeowners more money to connect. And so we considered that, and we felt that we would take another look at that. The technical reason for the way we did it, there's two good reasons. One is, is the most flexibility for homeowners. The deeper the main is, the more flexibility you have to connect to that main. Because if your septic system is deep now on your property, and the sewer was up here, you've got to pump up to it. So you'd have to install a grinder pump, which is costly and has costs associated with it forever. So it's more flexibility. And the other alternative is to put in a riser. And the riser brings with it a maintenance issue, because you have to connect at a 90-degree angle. And anytime you do that in a sewer, you have the potential for clogs. So we try to avoid that. So it was the best technical solution to have the connections where they are. Every person along that line can connect. But again, it was brought to our attention that some contractors wouldn't be able to do this. They don't have the equipment because it's deep. You have to have a trench box, and you have to be more sophisticated, frankly, as a contractor. And so we considered that, talked to Town Manager Ls, and decided that we would put these risers in that would get it up higher. And basically, you're shifting the cost from the homeowner burden onto the project, and it gets spread throughout the project. And so what we're doing now is we are putting together an RFP. And rather than go through a change order with the existing contractor, we want to make sure we're getting the best price for this work. So we're going to go out to bid for it. There's 225 homes along this line in the project. 62 of them hadn't been done yet. So those 62 that hadn't been done yet will have the risers within the project now. And the other 163 will be subject to this contract that we will come seeking appropriation for and probably install in the fall timeframe. And then we'll be ready for connection at that point, because the rest of the project will be done by then. So I hope that clarifies the issue. Again, there's no mistakes. It was done exactly how it was designed. And, but we've just made a change that we think will benefit, benefit homeowners.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. And thank you for obviously considering that in the first place. And so, again, it's a living, breathing project. And as it moves along, and I really appreciate time for, to be able to explain that. So thank you very much.
My pleasure.
And so before I close Town Command and Communications, just looking around, oh, Councillor Lucky, please.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to comment on what we just heard from Mr. Santos. It was one of my constituents that brought that up to me with the sewer. So I really appreciate Mr. Santos talking about that. I think he had talked about it earlier when I wasn't here. But I think that's good. That's very responsive. And, you know, he had said it wasn't a mistake, but it's a challenge. So I think it sounds like we've come up with the best solution for our homeowners to, you know, take some of the burden off them and spread it across the project. I really think that's a really nice way to solve this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councillor Lucky. All right. So that would close our Town Manager Communications time of the meeting. And Madam Vice President, please, if you could, help me act on the minutes.
Yes, I move to approve the minutes of the Town Council meeting from February 16th, 2023. Second.
We have first and a second. Is there any discussion? Are you not seeing any? If you could signify your approval by raising your hand and saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Looking around, I don't see any. It is unanimous. Moving on to Council Communications from elected officials, boards, committee staff, commission reports, correspondence, and announcements. Is there anything on this side from the council in regards to announcements? To my left, looking to my right, anybody? Councillor Attilas wasn't able to make the meeting tonight, but he did ask me to make a couple announcements. On March 7th, the New England Wind Avant Grid Route Selection, there's a meeting on, one, there's Mother's Park Pump Station Sewer Expansion Information Meeting, I'm sorry, on Tuesday, March 14th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Location is Town Hall Hearing Room. This meeting will be recorded by Channel 18 and following, and following the in-person meeting, the recording will be posted to the town website for anyone to view. And number two, Main Street Centerville Roadway and Pedestrian Improvements Speed Mitigation Informal Meeting is Tuesday, April 4th, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Location, Barnstable Adult Community Center, 825 Falmouth Road. The meeting will also be recorded by Channel 18. And following the in-person meeting, the recording will be posted to the town website for anyone to view. And so going back to that first one, I guess on March 7th, there's a New England Wind Avant Grid Route Selection meeting. He didn't leave any other information. But if you do have any questions in regards to that, I'm sure you could reach out to Councillor Attilas and he'll answer it for you. So I just wanted to make that announcement for him. Any other announcements before we move on? Okay, I think we should just jump into the orders of the day. We do not have any items of old business, but we do have some items of new business. And at this point, I have a little script here. I would entertain a motion to suspend Town Council rules 12 and 15 so that the council may vote on item 2023-137 tonight. And I just need someone to make that motion in a second.
So moved.
We have first and a second, and we need to vote on that. So if we could, do we need a roll call vote on that, Janie Nober?
No.
We do not. So it's a majority vote. If we could signify your approval by suspending the rule, raising your hand and saying aye?
Aye.
I believe that is unanimous. And with that being said, Councillor Shinet, please, if you could, item number two, 2023-137.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is an item of new business, and we will have, we are going to be acting on it tonight as a result of that previous motion. Item number 2023-137, appointments to a board committee or commission. The Town Council appoints the following individuals to a multiple-member board committee or commission. The Comprehensive Financial Advisory Board, Christopher LaZan, as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2025. Council of Aging, Melissa Alden, as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2025. And Kathleen Strudwick, as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2024. To the Hyannis Main Street Waterfront Historic District Commission, Jennifer Hinkley, as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2023. And Matt Clark, as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2025. Infrastructure and Energy Committee, Barry Scheingold, as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2025. Recreation Commission, James O'Leary, as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2025. And to the Youth Commission, Shalonda Grant, as a student member to a term expiring 6/30/2024. And Megan Garthie, as a student member to a term expiring 6/30/2024.
Second.
We have first and a second. Any discussion from the council? Madam Vice Chair?
Just a quick question for the Chair of the Appointments Committee. Are the Youth Commission members from Barnstable, just kind of playing off some of the questions we had about, do you happen to know what schools they attend?
I don't know.
It's okay, no problem. I just wondered because it's interesting to have the representation.
I think they were both from night school.
Yeah. We, we never used to have
That could be, just to clarify, that could be what Luca Andre, the Vice Chair, was referencing when he said he had two new members.
Yeah.
That could be it.
Okay.
How about that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Good question. Any other discussion? All right. And so now this is a second reading. And is this a roll call? I'm sorry, it's not doing a second reading, we just don't, is this a roll call vote? No, it's not. So it will signify it's a majority vote. Signify approval by raising your hand and saying aye?
Aye.
And that is unanimous. It passes. If we could please, Councillor Shaughnessy, please, item number 2023-138.
Thank you, President Levesque. This is new business may be acted upon by majority vote. Item number 2023-138, authorization to expend a fiscal year 2023 grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Seaport Economic Council in the amount of $1 million for the reconstruction of the Bismarck Park Marina Bulkhead, as written.
Second.
We have a first and a second. And I believe we have Director Santos coming up for our rationale, please.
Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. The town of Barnstable was awarded a $1 million grant to reconstruct the Bismarck Park Marina Bulkhead. The existing bulkhead was reconstructed in the 1960s and rehabilitated in the 1990s. A comprehensive inspection in 2010 determined that the bulkhead should be replaced by the mid 2020s. Our goal is to complete the bulkhead reconstruction in 2025. Bulkhead reconstruction is essential for continued operation in this busy marina, which serves passenger ferries, commercial fishing, and other commercial vessels. Transient and recreational boating, as well as landside uses, including parking, the artist's shanties, harbor master's office, welcome center, and more. The town section of the bulkhead is approximately 675 feet long and will include overshooting, anchors, timber piles, pier repairs, utility adjustments, and other associated work. Highline Cruises recently reconstructed a section of their own bulkhead, and they are planning to reconstruct another section as well. Regarding fiscal impact, a 20% local match is required, and we have $200,000 available for that local match from a previously appropriated funds for this project. The estimated construction cost for this work is $7.45 million. Therefore, the town share of the project is estimated to be $6.45 million. We expect to request these funds in fiscal year '25, and we intend to pursue other grant opportunities as well. The project may be phased if necessary. Separate Seaport Economic Council grants awarded in 2021 are funding design and permitting for the bulkhead replacement and associated dredging. Thank you.
Thank you. And, just make sure I get this right. Thank you for that rationale. Any council discussion? Councillor Shinet, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Dan. Is there any timeframe in which we have to expend the grant funds? Or is it?
We've worked that into our schedule, so that's, that's not an issue. But yeah, there is, there always is.
Any other comments, questions from my right-hand side, left-hand side? Councillor Star, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Santos. That's great. So my question is, in the 60s, it was reconstructed, and then in the 90s, it was rehabilitated. So we're going to, we're going to pull it all out completely and
Rebuild it, yeah.
Okay, that's great. Well, is it, is the top of it going to be higher?
Yes.
And I'm thinking about, okay.
Yes, yep.
Planning ahead and
Yes, sea level rise is real.
Would it stop? If we had a really high surge of a tide, would it stop that?
Well, that's, yeah, that's the intention.
That's the intention?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So if water comes over there, how far back does it go? Does it go back to the Black Cat and the parking lots?
I don't know. Offhand, I can get that information to you, but I don't have that here tonight.
Yeah. Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Great question. Madam Vice Chair, please.
I'm really excited to see this project happen. It's going to be awesome. I'm wondering if we have, through planning or through Director Poyant, any sort of public outreach that's going to be happening to talk about people who live on the harbor and what they're interested in seeing there, and any sort of other design mechanisms in place or anything like that?
Absolutely. We, as with all our projects, when we get a conceptual design, we'll have a meeting with the community, various ways that we reach out and gain input. And then when we have the final design, we'll do the same thing. So there'll be lots of outreach.
So as I mentioned at the last meeting, when the Fishermen's Alliance was here, there's a lot of people that are very interested in the harbor and have been for years, i.e. Wayne Kirker and other people that live around there. Mike Kime is one. Anyway, one of the things that I hear repeatedly from people that live near the harbor, and I wish Councillor Attilas was here because he spent so much of his life there, was that there's no place for boats to provision when they come in. And so I would love, and I would love to like dovetail some other community concerns I have about not having a farmer's market, for instance, in Hyannis that accepts SNAP benefits. I think it would be awesome to really think about this. I know it's only a million bucks, but really think about it and get the most we can out of it. And I know we're talking about sewer mostly now, but, you know, when we talk about economic development and our blue economy, allowing people to come in and provision their boats in Hyannis would be great because there is no shopping source there for anything. So there's just a bigger picture than just, just the bulkhead, you know? And I loved what the Fishermen's Alliance said. I would love a conversation with them to do something like they have in Chatham, which is just an absolute destination. I mean, I'm in Chatham twice a week for my job, and it's always busy down there in the winter. It's busy. So it'd be really great to loop that in as a part of our working it's busy. So it'd be really great to loop that in as a part of our working history. And so there's just so many opportunities with it. It's very exciting, and I know that the Civic Association would have a lot to say about it as well, so.
We're going to seek that input, and hopefully, we'll hear more from you and others that have opinions.
Awesome. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other comments, questions, where we vote? Thank you, Dan, and thank you for your efforts in getting more money, because that's, it's definitely going to take more as we move forward, correct? And I look forward to seeing those conceptual designs when they come. So that being said, if you could raise your hand and signify your approval by saying aye? It's an easy lift. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Have a great night. Counselor Cusack, please, if you could. Item number 2023-139.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is new business as well, a first reading, to be referred to a second reading on March 16th, 2023. It's item number 2023-139, an order approving an amendment to the 1992, 1995, and 1997 agreements between the town and the Woods Hole, Martha's Vineyard, and the Nantucket Steamship Authority.
We have a first and a second, again referring to our second read on March 16th, 2023. Raise your hand, signify your approval by saying aye? That is unanimous. Next item of new business, Counselor Luckey, please. Item number 2023-140.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. This is new business, refer to a public hearing, 3162023. It's item 2023-140, appropriation order in the amount of $34,500 for burial equipment for the Department of Public Works Cemetery Program.
We have a first and a second, and if you could signify your approval by referring this to a public hearing on 316, 2023, raising your hand and saying aye?
Aye.
That is unanimous. And that is our last item on our agenda today. Exactly. Yes, thank you. So now I move to go into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, since a discussion open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town and Town Council. Specifically, the council will discuss a notice of intent to file suit dated February 16th, 2023, sent by the Conservation Law Foundation to the town regarding claims under the Federal Clean Water Act. The council will not return to public session after the executive session is finished. I just need a second. Thank you. And a roll call vote, please.
Counselors, Cullen?
Yes.
Cusack?
Yes.
Rapgrassetti?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Luckey?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schneck?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
That is unanimous. So now we're going executive session, and at this point in time, we need to clear the room. So I appreciate you being with us tonight. Thank you for coming. It's good to see you once again. Mr. Brasket, good to see you.